Call this meeting to order, please.
I pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. For real call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman George. Alderman Eynen. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince. Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Under new business, we have a bill number forty-five oh six, an ordinance approving a change order, number one, to the contract with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri, on the twenty-twenty-second street paving program in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Correct that amount, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine.
I'm sorry, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Yep, motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Very good.
Motion for a second reading.
Second, Dan.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, second reading of bill number forty-five oh six, an ordinance approving a change order, number one, to the contract with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri, on the twenty-twenty-two street paving program in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six... thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
For real call, please.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-five oh six now becomes ordinance forty-four twenty-three.
Thank you. With that, I will adjourn that meeting. Thank you very much. For approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Happy, it's your meeting.
In front of you is updated versions of the either eight percent, dollar raise, whatever variation you want to make of that. But the only difference really between the two is going to be in your salary and benefits. So we can go with the same proposed large capital items. So I will just cover the... Let's go with the one-dollar budget overview and work from left to right. Since, again, it's the same, roughly the same thing. The eight percent is below fifty percent. The one dollar is above fifty percent for what we put... Keep our reserves in case there is some sort of disaster that occurs. And we don't have that income. So we can survive operationally for six months. That's what our estimate is, which means, you know, we're not going to do any capital items. We're not going to be purchasing much anyway, but that's kind of the way this works. So if we start on the left, we have an unaudited balance. And when we say unaudited, that means we're taking what we see at the time that we're doing this, what our number is, we believe is going to be left at the end of the budget year. So that is one point six six eight seven thirty, so one point six million. We estimate we're going to have revenue, which is divided into three different spots. One is the police department, so that's proposition P. That's what that brings in, is about a hundred eighty-nine thousand. That's what we estimate. The welcome center has money coming in for advertising, so that's twenty-four thousand. We listed there. So we have two million, two... Eight sixty-two, seven oh three is what we estimate the rest of the revenues are. So that's the accumulation of everything else that we have taxes on for a total of three... three million, seventy-five thousand, seven oh three. And then we figure out, are we doing okay operationally? And yes, we are. That's in the green. So the revenue less the ops, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three. One reason that number is so high is we have a lot of ARPA money that's included in this. So that's a misleading number. Usually we have about sixty to a hundred thousand dollars. So... But it's nice to see that we have that much. So we work our way across. We have salaries and benefits, operational. Those are what we've divided up into the different line items that we've gone through with the department heads. And then we move to the right over to capital items. So these are large ticket items that I feel kind of sit in this area as opposed to capital improvements, which we put down into another area at the bottom. But eventually you get down to whether we have a profit... You don't want to say profit, but we have revenue extra or we have a deficit. And we end up with a deficit, which usually tips back into our reserves. So that deficit is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, fourteen. Then if you figure that, you take the backup to where we have fund balance twenty-twenty-two, two million, two hundred and three thousand. You subtract the capital improvements of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, subtract the two hundred and twenty-four thousand, oh fourteen. That leaves you with one million, two hundred and twenty thousand, seven oh two, which is fifty-two percent of what we need to operate, the basics for city hall in case of a disaster. That's where we want to be, over that fifty percent. You are dipping into reserves. We hope by the end of the year, we have about a half a million left of what we've budgeted. And we've seen that growth because you have to remember with this budget here, we have already pulled out four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last two years that we put into capital projects. And we're still at the point where we'll be able to afford what we have, what we pay people, the operations, the paper that we buy, capital improvements that we make. I mean, we're still doing fairly well. So that's the general revenue. And that's probably... That's the one fund that can pay for everything else. And then you have your enterprise and dedicated funds. Work on the same process. On the left, we have an unaudited balance. And then on the right, we have what we estimate to be the balance at the end of the budget year. Again, all estimates because some things may be bought, some things may not. Some things may be used, some things may not. So with parks, we feel we're going to have sixty-six thousand left. Revenues will be about two hundred and twenty-three thousand, a little over that. Our operational, because we don't have salary and benefits anymore in that group, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six eighty-nine. We're going to transfer in a hundred thousand from general fund. So we have capital items of a hundred and sixty-two, five twenty-five. Most of that's going to be the trail. And we have some pieces of equipment that we'll talk about. That's what that number comes from. We end up at a balance of two eighty-nine, two fourteen, which leaves us an actual balance of zero at the end of the budget year. Because we had to transfer money in, that's how we got to the zero part of it.
That hundred, where... I mean, because that is earmarked for the trail or just...
No, that is actually that we have to put in there to keep parks operational, that we can afford to do the things that we do there. We have always transferred.
Not necessarily for the trail.
No, no.
Okay.
But the hundred and sixty-two, five twenty-five is part of it. That's seventy-some thousand is in there for the trail. And the rest is for the equipment and for the extras that we want to put in there so that the park board can have a chance to try to make an improvement in there this next year. So for streets, we have an unaudited... Do you want me to go through each one of these? Is that... Or do you want me to highlight? Do I go through each one of them? Okay. So streets, we'll start off at nine hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy. We have not spent money yet for the street improvements. So you're going to see elevated numbers at this point because we're at this point of the budget year. We estimate revenues of seven fifty-one, two fifty. Again, we don't have salaries and benefits because of alliance. Operationally, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven fifty is what we have to... In that group, we have a debt service or equipment of ten thousand, eight eighty-five. We will expend four hundred and fifty-two thousand, which will go over in the proposed budget items. And we have a department total of little over a million dollars, which leaves us a balance of six hundred and thirty-one thousand. Tourism tax, we have sixty-three thousand left in that fund at the end of the year, we believe. Probably be more than that. Thirty-three thousand, two hundred is what we believe on revenue, based on what we've seen in the past. We've budgeted forty thousand this year for some extra items, which again, then the department told us forty thousand to spend. We're still going to have fifty-six thousand, two hundred at the end of the year. For the band fund, seventy-eight thousand, one forty-nine is what we figure on their unaudited balance. Their revenues will be about fifty-six, three. They've budgeted fifty-three, one ten. Leaves us an ending balance of about eighty-one thousand, three thirty-nine at the end of our budget year. So the cemetery fund, two hundred and fifty-five thousand is what we have in there as an unaudited balance. Thirty-six thousand, two twenty-five is what we expect for revenues. And that's a property tax that everybody pays. Twenty thousand, six oh five is what we figure on expenditures. Most of that is grass cutting. So we're looking at a balance at the end of the year of two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty. Special road district, we're figuring twenty-five thousand. That's a donation from the special road district to help us pay for the... This year, it's going to be Little Rock Road. When we do that project, we'll get twenty-five thousand from them. That'll be gone probably by the end of the year. But at this point, it's still in there as what we project to have.
We're leaving... Gave us more than that in the past, or is that something we don't get every year?
We don't get every year.
Okay.
They will help us with a project. And in this case, because we're doing Little Rock Road out to the ferry, they felt that that was something that they could use their expenditures for. So water is an enterprise fund, has to maintain itself financially. So eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five... Two fifty-eight is what we believe is the unaudited balance. We're looking at revenues of two million, eight oh two, one seventy. We do have staff that's paid out of that. That's where you see salaries and benefits even with alliance. Then for operational, it's a million, twenty-six thousand, eight thirty-six. We have capital... We have... I'm sorry, we have debt service of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine sixty-two. Capital items this year, one point nine million, which of one point five is going to be a water main improvement in ARPA money. So we look at the department total being about three point two million dollars. That is a large number, but that's because of the ARPA funds that we're using. We have electric, water mains, and there was one other item that we had going in there. It may just be... Maybe it's just the electric, the end of the electric and the water mains. So that's a lot of expenses, but most of this is going to be ARPA money. So our ending balance is four thirty-seven, five fifty-two at the end of... At the end of the budget year. For sewer, we're looking at an unaudited balance of eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two eighty-six. Revenues of about eight hundred and fourteen thousand, oh twenty-one. We split fifty-fifty for staff, so it's sixty-eight, oh seventy-eight, same thing as what's in water. Our operational is five ninety-eight, five twenty-five, seventy-six thousand, eight seventy-four in debt. We're estimating a hundred and ninety thousand in capital improvements. So a total of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, four seventy-seven, with an ending balance of seven seventy-seven, eight thirty. Downtown Tiff, we'll have a balance of nine thousand. We're estimating twenty-seven, two fifty as income. We're spending... We're planning on expending about twenty-three thousand, five hundred. So that's the total expenditure with an ending balance of twelve thousand, seven fifty. For debt service... So debt service and capital improvement sales taxes are now combined. Our auditors wanted us to create a separate line for where the money comes in for the capital improvement tax, and then we allocate it. So we end up bringing three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars into the capital sales tax because we've transferred everything out at this point. And it starts at zero. But what we'll end up doing is then transferring it into debt service. So you see two revenue lines, but that's because it comes into one, then goes into the other, and then pays for what you see down at the... If you go down debt service, we have twenty-two fifty that we have in operational. That's the audit. We're going to expend about two hundred thousand, eight twenty. Our total is two oh three, oh seven oh, of a balance of one forty-four, nine thirty. This will probably be adjusted as the year goes on because we don't want to leave a balance in debt service. And we really don't want to leave a balance in the capital improvement sales tax because we're looking at putting that into the city hall boardroom improvement. So that's where it'll all end up going. But we're... This is year number one, so we're trying to figure out how we want to work this. But so you see, three forty-eight comes in, three forty-eight goes out, and it ends up being zero. But that's... They're connected. I didn't know how better to show that on the spreadsheet yet. I'll get to that. Rural fire, we have a balance of a hundred and eighty-five, five seventy-two, looking at revenue of about thirty-one, four forty. That's fire tags. Sixteen thousand, seven is what our operational expenses are that we pull out of there. We have moved the extrication tools to here. If we're going to go with the part-time fire chief, because those kind of offset each other. So we had to... If we were going to do the tools, forty thousand went down into the rural fire fund. Total expenditures of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred, a fund balance of one sixty-three, twelve. Capital projects, we have a non-audited balance of two point eight million. We're looking at bringing in a hundred and ten thousand. Most of that's coming from the general fund. Twenty-five hundred is what our audit expenses are. Sixty-three thousand is what we're looking to spend. Sixty-five five is our total. So our ending balance on that is twenty-eight, fifty-four, two seventy-one.
Happy, I... This capital improvement sales tax, I can't say I totally understand where that comes from and how.
All right. So we have three sales taxes that we accumulate during the year when you buy something. So we've got... So we've got full... Or two percent, two percent sales tax that people pay in the city. That's ours. So one percent is general fund, half percent is transportation, and a half percent is capital improvements. That's what that fund line is. And that's what the debt service has always been. So it's a capital improvement tax that the city has approved.
Okay.
So what you bring in, in streets, is kind of the same thing that you bring into your debt... For your debt service or your capital improvements. It has to be used for capital improvements. It can't be used like the general fund can. So if we do a street improvement with it, if we do the building improvements, it's that kind of stuff that you can use it for.
So it's a benefit?
It will eventually be helping to pay for the water tower out by the community center. And that's, again, a capital improvement. That's what it can pay for.
Wouldn't we also talk about debt service and stuff? Just somebody had brought something up to me and stuff. You know, we lease a lot of our equipment and vehicles. Any idea of what we pay in interest charges over those leases per year? And is there a point in time when it would be more efficient for us rather than pay the interest to buy them out of pocket?
It's... Would be cheaper to buy them out of pocket because obviously you're saving the interest. Do you have an idea what we're paying in interest? No, and I don't either, so...
Because the debt service is basically all on like the backbones, skid steer, police cars. You know, those type of things. I mean, we're not buying coffee machines or something like that or a telephone system. We're buying major pieces of equipment and stuff. And I mean, I realize we couldn't buy them all, but is there a point in time, you know, that we could somehow do something, hold off buying something or something like that, that we could be more efficient, you know, reduce our costs and stuff by paying that interest rate and be able to pay for something out of pocket?
The trade-off can be with the police vehicles is maintenance. If you keep newer vehicles within those five years, you have less maintenance to worry about.
Well, I'm not... Yeah, I'm not getting into that discussion. I'm just in front of an overall benefit in whatever we buy on lease. You know, is there a breaking point that we could save ourselves some money and stuff in interest costs and stuff or whatever it is?
So try to buy outright every time? Is that what you're...
Well, I mean, I don't know. I'd just like to know what we're paying in interest and stuff. And if there's some way we could formulate something, you know, maybe it's wait a year or two to buy a backhoe or something or something like that, just as a capital expenditure like that, that we could save a substantial amount of money. You know, because that is a... I mean, of course, the debt service, that's on a lot of stuff. That's not just those.
Yeah, debt services on... Isn't debt service on water sewer plant improvements? Yeah.
Yes.
So that's what that is for. What you see is the capital, like the cars and... That's the payment that we make every year for the cars. So we've got five different leases out for ten, eleven cars, and that's how that works.
Right. I mean, I've noticed in the police cars and stuff, that number changes every year. Because I couldn't understand until I really, you know, you look into the audit and stuff like that. And it tells you then, you know, in that audit, that's not for the vehicle. That's just the lease on whatever vehicles we're paying at that particular time and stuff. But I just, you know, just wondering if, you know, if there's a number and stuff out there that we could look at just to see, to be more efficient. That's it. Not, you know, looking at anybody's policy or plan of trading or anything like that and stuff, but...
Sorry, you think there's a breaking... You think there's a breaking point then on the interest that we're paying?
Well, I practice one, so...
And we've been lucky because of when we've been doing this, since I've been here, interest rates have been low. Now we may see a difference.
Right, and that was the other part of coming up, you know, interest rates are climbing, you know, by the corner and stuff. And we're going to get to a point, are we going to be at ten percent interest here, you know, on these lease improvements? Well, then that's a big number, a lot bigger number. I know because some of our last ones were what, two and a half, three percent, something like that, so...
Yeah.
Just trying to be efficient.
I think those leases are like right around two percent.
Right. So in that case...
Yeah, I know when we read. Yeah, it was a little more than that, but not much. But, you know, just as the interest rate climbs, though, it's going to get bigger and bigger until the feds get smart.
But if the money's available, there's not necess... If the money's available to buy outright, there's not necessarily a benefit in doing lease purchase if we would have the money to buy an equipment outright.
And...
Right?
The idea is that you can... You cycle better if you do it with a lease purchase agreement. And you can... Yeah, we can pay for it, but what will happen is it won't happen. So if you keep going through the lease purchase arrangement, you'll keep that program going and purchase the... Or get the vehicles and update them every five years in this case.
There's a fear of it not happening because of future board to say, well, it's paid for, might as well keep it. Is that where you're...
Yeah, and then just, you know, then they just gain in miles and age. And then you get into a higher maintenance factor.
Or things like that, like with the police cars, if we wanted to buy those outright, is there a policy that we can write that, like an ordinance policy of some sort that we can write that we are committed to this kind of timeline, but purchasing them outright instead of...
You mean set a policy and says we can't vary from that. We still have to trade them in every...
Yeah, this is the current. And if a board wants to change it, they have to go through rescinding that ordinance.
Right.
Or whatever, by majority vote. Because I think, looking at the police cars that we purchased last year, I think our payments ended up being... Are scheduled out like twenty thousand a year. Well, as we get into these next few, assuming that vehicles are going to be just as much and the interest rates are going to go up, we can assume minimum twenty thousand for the next four years of leases, right? So we're going to be at a hundred thousand dollars a year paying leases when we probably could have bought two vehicles for that hundred thousand, right, in theory?
So in theory, but also remember that you have these leases now. So you would still have that payment for the next four years of lease. The larger...
Yeah, there's not a cash savings and stuff, but...
Not immediately, no.
Right, but, you know, the city, I mean, we don't realize, you know, in business, that interest cost is tax deductible. It's not for the city.
No.
So there's, you know, we lose that benefit where in business, it's a hundred percent deductible, you know. So... But that's, you know...
I mean, from my understanding, talking to the chief, is the city wasn't rotating through the vehicles fast enough, well enough. They were, you know, letting them... This was one way to get it going.
Yeah, that's just a whole different discussion and stuff, but I was just looking for...
Looking for the cost of what those leases are.
Why pay a bank and pay ourselves?
Yeah. And it may have been at the time, we didn't have the money, so that may be... That may be how it started. So, you know, I'll get those numbers for you. I'll get that number for you. Kind of... I'll give you a total.
But still, even in this debt service number, though, why does that show as a separate line item entry when water and sewer is its own fund? Or is...
So you can pay for capital improvements out of the debt service, but it can't be... It isn't part of your water fund that you're maintaining. So the water fund has to have revenue and expenditures, and it can't... You know, it has to maintain itself. And you have to be able to maintain your facilities and equipment. So the debt service can be, because it is a capital improvement, can be used for anything capital in the city. So it can be water, it can be vehicles, it can be improvements in city hall.
So it's just a separate line item rather than actually applied back to that fund as an expense out of that fund?
Right, right. Whereas the water fund can't pay for improvements to city hall because that's not... Unless it's like for an area that is just for utilities. It has to be specific. Yeah. It's complicated, but it's more like just running a business. That's a business fund. That's how it's listed with the auditors. That's how that's looked at. So our estimate is... So if we look at the green, the general and enterprise funds total, we're looking at eight point six, over eight point six million is what we're estimating on revenue. Our beginning balance is at seven point six million. We're figuring an ending balance of six point six million, a little over six point six. So we have increased since I've been here, probably about... Because of ARPA, we have gone up about a million dollars with revenues and expenditures. But that's just the elevation that we've gotten to because of these incomes, these funds that we have.
But we didn't get any dollars from ARPA though.
Well, we're estimating that we're going to because of what we've applied for. We have gotten... We have gotten eight hundred and ninety thousand from them for improvements. We have now, the latest trench came in yesterday, and then there's an extra payment that's supposed to come in next week. So we'll have another four hundred and ninety-five thousand, I think is what it is. Yeah. And that's... And we've got that figured out what we're paying for, bathrooms and improvements and cybersecurity and all that stuff, so...
You know, I still want to go back to this reserve fund and stuff. I don't mean to pick up too much of the time, but, you know, we're still not mandated by the state to maintain a percentage of reserve fund. That's all on whatever we think. They want to control everything else. Why don't they?
Can you give me any more ideas?
Well, that's true.
Other cities might struggle.
I'd rather have somebody else.
Smaller cities might struggle with that.
All right. Yeah, some cities, you know, probably keep five, ten percent. That's the most they can do, but... Yeah, so the state doesn't regulate. No, it's up to the individual city. It's just your best practice.
Look at the fifty percent... Or the fifty cent cola, fifty cent performance option, that sheet. You know, you're estimating that's going to put fifty-two percent reserves. If you... Is there anything you feel like was on the edge? Maybe wasn't vetted by you, a major purchase that... If you brought that down to also forty-eight percent, so we could stare and compare at these sheets, well, at forty-eight percent? Did we leave anything on the table that we could buy if we adjust that down?
So we can spend that extra two percent?
I mean, yeah. I'm just... Is there anything that... I know you vetted each department. And so what we'll see tonight, here tonight, is probably not every item, obviously not every item that they wanted. So can we...
On your sheet.
Is there anything you feel, gut feel, that we could put that money to use for?
I mean, if we decide to allocate it to streets, that seems to be one of the big pushes. We don't have to worry about stormwater because we have ARPA money. We was paying for a study on that. That was one of the other big issues that we've had come before us. So we've already figured it... I've already figured in a salary survey. That was brought up at the last meeting. So I don't know... We'd have to look at what we were thinking about purchasing in the future and trying to put it into this year, maybe. But there wasn't anything, anything major that we took out. I mean, I moved the extrication tools out. And because of the... Because of the part-time fire chief, if you put the extrication tools back in, then you have to pull something else out to balance that forty-four thousand. That would pull it down below fifty percent.
I just... I remember talking to you about, hey, do we need to reconsider the, you know, the money held in reserve, those limits, in order to make better use of that money? And that just struck me, just a comment I made, it struck me as an opportunity if you take that down to forty-eight percent. And I know that's... It's not a wave of your want, I know that, but it makes these sheets match. And then it's maybe an opportunity to pick up an item that we may want.
How much would that two percent leave?
Yeah, I have not done that yet.
Mike, are you asking just because you feel like we say we need to be at a minimum fifty percent? So it should be fifty percent, not fifty-two percent?
Well, so that is always... Well, so that is always has concerned me, is the money we hold in reserves. And there is no guidance, so it's a gut feel around the table of how that works, but we. I know, I know that people probably don't agree with me when I say this, but I mean, I think our job, we take money in, and we put money back out, we spend money, and it lands on zero, as you've done. But if we look at the money we held in reserves, are we missing some opportunities to do? And I have a heavy in for a lengthy meeting and discussion, and I realize now it's not just a matter of writing a check and making, you know, manufacturing a balance in those accounts, but.
Well, I'm just, my opinion is something's going to come up. You know, it's, I mean, it's balanced now, it's not going to be in three months.
Yeah, I don't dispute that.
2%, or we could, when we start looking at roads to pave, we can then decide, well, maybe that extra 2% is something we want to.
Right, I don't disagree, nor do I want to play fast and loose with those accounts, but, I mean, I just really look like.
You don't like a savings account, big one?
Well, yeah, it can't be a savings account because we're not trying to make a profit in the city. We're trying to collect tax money and then serve citizens by spending that tax money in the way that they want us to, on things that we need. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but this is just one more reminder that the city has gone underserved for a number of years. And now we have the privilege of playing catch-up, and it's not popular. It doesn't make me feel great around the table, but it's necessary.
Well, you can, you can, you can look at it a couple different ways and stuff, I mean, you know, my feeling is every time we're not efficient, we kick the can down the road on something we need.
Agree with you.
You know, and that's the only reason I look at trying to be efficient and stuff, is to stop kicking the can down the road. But, you know, every year we get down to the paving, and that's what gets kicked down the road.
I feel like we got hit by the can this year, that's how I feel.
You know, I'm going to ask those two up there, being they've been here the longest and stuff, have we ever got into a financial position? And Pam, you've been here through the 93 flood, and that's it. You wasn't here for the 73 flood?
No. Thanks, Bob.
Can I get you an insurance?
Make it two.
Ashley, be quiet, but I.
Been a long time, not quite that long.
I mean, have we ever got into a position where we've been? Let's talk about that 20% raise.
I see where you're going with it, though.
But I mean, have we ever been?
Strapped.
Strapped.
There's been years that we've been strapped, but, I mean, Buck's?
Yeah.
Buck's been here.
When I first got in, Dave Anger took over, we really cut expenses, I mean, everything was cut.
But I mean, we had to cut to balance and pay our bills.
Yeah, but look at that history, I don't profess to know the history like Buck might know the history, but isn't that, are we talking about a timeframe when the water department was in such disrepair?
Yes.
So I mean, that's what I'm saying, spending that money is an obligation, like, we can cheap everything, and then we're going to have rundown, and I know you agree with that, I'm not trying to dress you down.
I like Ashley, no.
No, it's just a matter of being a little bit frugal and having some reserve, you need to have that, just in case.
You do, sure.
But you cannot, you cannot be so focused on that and so focused on the future that you lose track of where you're at today and what you need to do today, you know? And that's my whole thing with the board, you can't be so worried about, because none of us knows what's going to happen tomorrow. We don't know if a bridge is going to, it could be a major earth, look what happened in St. Louis two weeks ago with the flooding up there. And when that catastrophe happens, there'll be outside help. Will it be hard? Yeah, it's going to be difficult, but there will be help, hopefully.
Sometimes a long time coming.
Well, sure, but that's when you've got good leadership and you get through it, so, very confident in that.
So on this budget, so when I handed it out, me with last week's, we were at 54%. Keep in mind that I've added 25,000 in, that kept us at 52. So my job is to keep it above 50%. That's what I feel I'm tasked to do for the general fund, so that's why I do that. If I'm going to leave it at 52, yeah, because then I have a little weagle room if something does come up that the board wants to do.
Can totally appreciate that, yeah.
Or you get change orders like we had today on projects, right?
At any time.
Yeah.
So that 52% number is not etched in stone.
Can't argue with Bob, you're right.
We can do budget amendments as needed.
Actually, yes.
But taken in mind, we're talking about next year's stuff, so, but.
Okay, so any other questions about this, or on this whole off, we can get into the individual departments? That way, get these guys on the back row interested and engaged instead of sitting back there.
I'm paying attention now. I'm on a cell phone, it's like 100 teenagers.
It's only because you're next and you know, right?
Just putting this down.
So the chief is not able to make it tonight, but the lieutenant's here.
So Jim Crossman gave the presentation for the police department.
Sorry, before you start so happy, some of these numbers in red, so these are reworkings or just a little more detail?
We're talking about, right?
Yeah.
You'll notice above it says renewals, so that's the renewal amount each year.
Each year, okay, so that's the amount that, that.
That was what will go into.
If we improve that line item, it will cost us in future years to continue, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. So, like I said, Eric asked me to sit in for him, I'm not really sure what the presentation's supposed to be other than the items on the list, my understanding, I think they had discussed a lot of them. As far as the issue of the vehicles and Bob was questioning the interest, it was kind of our idea in the beginning, and when we initially went into this five-year program, that we would get to a point where we're at now where the sale of the cars would be generating enough money to at least pay for one vehicle, so if we would take the money after the auction and dump it right back in the loan, you're going to eliminate, you know, a third of your loan anyway with the bank. And that's kind of where we were wanting to be, but I don't think that's happened yet. I know Eric had touched on some of this last week, the rifle plates and the ballistic helmets. The ballistic panels that we wear now are pretty much for any type of handgun, we have no protection with any rifles. As everybody knows, times have changed, we went, I don't know how you put a price on safety, we're trying to get our guys as close as we can to being safe. And it's not just so much in the city, but there are times that we're called mutual aid to surrounding areas, so just, you don't know what you encounter, so. And the rifle panels are heavy and kind of awkward to wear, so it's something that's just an optional piece of equipment that I carry with them. If they go to something that, we do have a situation with somebody with a rifle, it's something they throw over all their gear, and they're just ceramic rifle plates, so. The part-time officers has to kind of help offset overtime pay as well as just the morale of the department. Since our ordeal last year with one of the officers, we have went to mandatory two people on at all time, which we should have been doing for years, and we just never could. So with that, we struggle sometimes with vacations and sick time, and so our guys are having to pull extra shifts. Well, when you're already doing 12-hour shifts, it makes it tough on them and it drives their morale down. So part-time pay is just hopefully get a couple guys in here that are already trained and have them fill some of those voids. Training in Lexi Pole, that's doing with policy and procedure, monitoring, and then that one also has the yearly, the $2,800 yearly subscription as well. Taser, we're one short on taser, for everyone to be outfitted with a taser. And then the license plate reader cameras, I know you discussed last week. Those run off of what we call a hot list through the mule system, and those just alert officers to stolen vehicles, wanted persons that may enter the town, gang-related activity. But they also do record and store every license plate in every vehicle for a short period of time. So if we get a burglary or we get something that goes on the city, especially if it's light traffic, we can narrow down the timeframe, we can go to that camera, pull that timeframe, and it'll show us every vehicle that drove by during that timeframe, and then we can start narrowing down the search from there.
Is there a bigger network, like, does that information hand off to?
Yes, that is all over, they're growing now, but that's across the US.
So criminals exiting town on 61 headed wherever, and it hands off to the next available network?
Correct.
If it exists.
Yes, and so if we have information, like, if we're just looking for a certain vehicle and we have the license plate number, we can put that into the system, and it'll search every camera across the US, and it'll tell us if that car has driven by one of those cameras, the time it drove by them, and it'll show us a picture of that vehicle as well. So they are all linked together.
So we benefit the sheriff's department who already has cameras if they're looking for something as well?
And just like now with their cameras, we get the alerts that they get, so, you know, unfortunately, those are on the interstate, most of the people don't take the exit, but our guys are alerted any time, you know, on the interstate when one of those is triggered, so our guys can go out, you know, on 32 or 61 and make sure those people don't enter the city.
That's a big upgrade.
So Eric had mentioned also and stuff that some of the private developments have those, I was just in Lake Forest and I noticed there's a camera now when you come out there, so does that one link to the city?
I don't know if that one is part of it, the private, we would have access to it, but the private entities or the private jurisdictions do not have access to what law enforcement would see.
Right, so it's.
So we may get their information if we wanted to search their camera to see if any cars have driven out there, but they wouldn't have access to any of the other information.
So is this a reoccurring expense?
Yes, that is a $2,500 a year each, and that's for maintenance. They come out, they place the cameras, they do, they maintain everything on it. So any problem with the cameras, you just call in, they come trade it out, and.
So is it two or five, or?
It's 5,000 to buy them initially, and then 2,500 a year per camera to maintain them.
It's 75 grand for us if we improve both of them.
Where would they be located at?
We haven't discussed exact locations, we would like to get to a point where the main thoroughfares coming into town would be covered, which, the way we're set up, two, three cameras you could cover just about, you know, each end of 61 and 32, and you got most of the town, at least from people that aren't familiar with the area.
So that brings up any particular warrants they may have also?
Correct, most places when they, if you have a warrant for your arrest, when they enter that warrant, they'll look and see what vehicles you have registered to you, and then they will attach your warrant to that vehicle license plate. So you may just have a warrant for a traffic offense, but it's linked to that vehicle. You drive by the camera and it'll alert the police.
So if somebody else is driving that vehicle?
And then they're just going to get stopped and end up getting turned loose, yes.
This Lexi Pole, that's essentially establishing a training manual or a procedures manual?
Correct, and they monitor your manual to make sure that you're staying up to date on policies with current case law, current, you know, situations going across the state, just to make sure that our policies aren't in violation with any new laws.
And is that, do their policy updates trickle down to, like, any county or local policies that would be put in place? Or is it only state mandated?
No, well, they'll put any policy that, like, right now, we have a policy that we operate off of, so they would start with our base policy and make sure that it's not in violation of any mainly state law, because really, policy violation isn't going to have anything to do with, you know, local law. And then they just keep them updated, and then they will, they can send out and force the officers to do mandatory training. So like each month, they'll send out, and these officers have to review this block of policies or this block of policies, and it just keeps them all refreshed on the current policy and procedures.
So that's then tracked?
Correct.
So you and Eric would have access to completed and?
Yes, they have to go through it, read it, and it's all timed, or they can't just play it in the background and walk away, and then we get the alert once they're completed with it.
Jason, I want to go back to the SUV thing, and again, I'm not going to get into the whole thing of, you know, is it efficient to trade these vehicles in at a particular time? But I've noticed a lot of law enforcement has went from cars to the SUVs.
Correct.
And I'm thinking SUVs are more expensive than the cars.
You would think so, and it's, when we bought them last year, it was about $1,500 a vehicle difference in a car versus the SUV. Yeah.
What about mileage and, you know, fuel efficiency and stuff, I mean, is there?
We haven't noticed a big difference, but we went from the, some of the patrol cars we had before had the V8s in them, some of them had the turbo engines in them, and we went to just a straight six-cylinder, which has helped our fuel economy compared to what we did have. I know, obviously, we're in a municipality, so we're not going to get the fuel economy that some of the troopers or a county get on the highway, but we haven't noticed a difference going from a car to an SUV, and a lot of it is with the engine change, too.
You know, and I've talked to some county people and stuff, you know, and they run them till the wheels fall off, but they have a manager, you know, to take care of that, and then Highway Patrol has their, you know, system that they've put into place. I mean, I guess the only question about this is, you know, we have an opinion here that it's better, but we don't have a rock part number or study or anything that's.
I don't have, I know there has to be, if the research has done studies out there, that puts a mileage or an hour meter reading on them at when the best time is for a municipality.
That would be very hopeful to see.
Yes, I know the, I know the five-year plan, we skipped it one year, and what we spent in maintenance was almost equivalent on that one year of what the payment would have been. We had bad cars at that time, it was the Impalas, and we invested, you know, we lost a motor in one, we lost a transmission in one, so we ate up what a payment would have been in one year, so.
How many miles in that two years do you average, rough idea?
In a five-year?
In a five-year, our, yeah.
When we get rid of an admin vehicle, of course, it's a little bit lower. Patrol vehicle, I would say around a 60, 50 to 60,000 mile mark.
I was going to say, I think the last couple that we've gotten rid of have been.
And that a lot depends on, you know, where we short an officer for a year, where a car's set for, you know.
So I would think the resale on that would be up, too.
Resale's gone way up in a lot of cases, but the car markets also went crazy in a couple of years.
You'll get a lot more for, and especially SUV, you're going to get more for that when you resell, so.
Part of my question and stuff was, you know, now that we've gotten away from these, you know, cars and stuff, I mean, the SUVs obviously don't cost much more, and I guess it doesn't cost anymore to outfit them?
No, and, you know, the bad thing with the upfitting, our goal is to, is to switch the equipment from vehicle to vehicle and try to get 10-plus years out of them, but the dealerships keep, the manufacturers keep changing the vehicles. So even the Durango now, they've come out and they made them wider and longer, so none of the interior equipment fits that they fit two years ago. So if the manufacturers would quit changing the vehicles, the goal would be to get two rotations out of, you know, the transport cages, the consoles, you know, those type of things.
So switching from the Durangos to the Explorers, I mean, there's no benefit to say all Durango or all Explorer?
Our goal, it wouldn't be to stay to all Durango or Explorer, either one. Durangos are cheaper than the Explorers, so our goal would be to stay to all Durango, and then if they quit changing the sizes of the interiors, then that equipment would just continue to roll over.
And just to make sure I understand, the $75,000 number, that does not include any of the upfitting?
No, that's everything, that's the upfitting, the labor and everything.
Right, okay. So is there any other towns around that are using those cameras that you know of? Because I think out on 55, right in front of the BP station out there, I've noticed something's mounted there now, right on the side of the road. Is that what the camera consists of, just a metal pole?
It can be, yeah, they'll put them on metal poles, they'll put them on road signs, and they're.
I mean, this just went up in the last few weeks, but I was wondering if that's where the cameras are and stuff, just.
Call it out so somebody can notice.
Yeah. I honestly, I can't tell you the exact locations, I know where one is at on 55, other than that, I don't know. And a lot of times they get moved, they'll set it one place for a month, and the company, if you want it moved, they'll come down and move it to a different location.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Don't have a whole lot to say, the general budget, we're keeping pretty much what we had before. We dropped a little bit on line item for annual certifications, we need a few more dollars in maintenance because our vehicles are getting older. We just had our pump testing today, so we found out that one of our trucks has a leaky valve, so those kind of things are going to come up, so we're hoping to add a little bit to the maintenance. On our capital expenditures, the turnout gear is just a continuation of our program, trying to get forward new sets every year, so we keep them in rotation and keep them in the age that they need to be. Plus the fact that we've been fortunate enough to find a few guys recently, the newer, so I will make them stay in old gear, so I see them for at least a year before I will buy them some gear so I don't spend money and they walk out on us. But in next year's budget, there's potential to have three or four guys. But in next year's budget, there's potential to have three or four guys that could really use new gear that have been with us for a year at that point. The computers, those are scheduled to be laptops, currently two of my training officers take their computers or laptops home and do a lot of work at home, researching for trainings and things like that, developing lesson plans, so we're hoping to replace those, the ones we have now are four or five years old. And probably the biggest topic there is the part-time chief, I'm asking that we consider part-time chief, a lot of the stuff that I need to do needs to be done during the daytime with business hours, contacting companies and things, uh, this week was an unusual week, cause Tuesday we had ladder testing, so I spent the day out there, today was pump testing, so I spent a big part of the day out there, and the last couple days I've spent probably four or five hours on the phone, and that all takes away from my personal time, which there's no hiding it, I do run a part-time mowing business and that takes time away from my other job, my other income, and this gets a priority whenever it needs to, so, um, we'll kinda come up with that number in a couple different ways. Uh, the biggest thing is when you look at some of the places that do have a full-time chief, uh, City Offters got a full-time chief two years ago and they're paying them about sixty-five thousand for a full-time position, uh, MECE out in Farmington's making around that same, so I'm looking for three days a week is what I'm proposing. Uh, with my current work schedule, I work a forty-eight ninety-six, so that gives me three days off during the week, even if I work Monday, Tuesday, I'd still have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to come in and spend three days at the firehouse, help me keep up the paperwork, and it would help in a lot of different ways, plus have somebody out there during the daytime for a quicker response potentially, so that's kinda the reason we're hoping to do that. And then on the rural fire fund, uh, we put extrication tools in there, currently our two sets of extrication tools were bought in nineteen eighty-five with a one, I think it was one tenth of one cent sales tax that was put in back in the day. The tools are working, and if we can't afford it, we, we can make do, they're not really been a big maintenance item, we were just looking at the age of them, maybe it's time to purchase something new, newer technology, cause there is some out there. So that one, we could kinda put on the back burner, but I'd like it there if we decided it's something we need to follow through with. And then one other thing I always bring up every year is we need to make sure that we're funding the replacement for truck, uh, in the last twelve to fourteen months, talking to the supplier that we buy usually from, he told me they had a eighteen percent increase in price in the last twelve months. When we bought the ladder truck, we had kinda talked about putting off the replacement of our ninety-three until like twenty-seven, and if we do that, that truck will be thirty-four, thirty-three to thirty-four years old. When we look at replacement costs and talking to that guy and what we think we're gonna need, which is similar to what we have, we're looking at probably an eight-hundred thousand dollar truck by twenty-seven, so we need to be thinking about how we're gonna defund that and putting money aside, at least for enough for a good down payment on something. So just please keep funding that accounts, we have some money when the time comes that we need to purchase something.
I think I brought that up a time or two, but, um, your big line item entry is the part-time chief, um, and this thirty-eight thousand dollar number and stuff, I mean, you know, we're talking about you, um, you currently receive something for the chief position, is this in addition to that, or is that...
I would think it would be just tacking on, so we'd have what I'm making now, bring up to, so it'd be a difference of like twenty-something thousand dollars, so I'm making like between seventy-five hundred and eight thousand dollars a year right now to run the department, so it'd be bringing that number up to thirty-eight, uh, thirty thousand or whatever the number was when we figured it out, yeah.
So that eight thousand is included in here, right, okay.
Happy, um, since we already have somebody in the position of chief, um, making this a formal part-time position, he just transfer, like, if he stays in that position, or does it have to be at the application?
He stays at the position.
Okay, since somebody, he's already there, okay.
And benefits?
Wouldn't be asking for any benefits, uh, with my current job, I've got really good benefits, I wouldn't need any of that, and the theory behind this one, we started talking about it a couple of years ago, was in two and a half years I retire from my full-time job, and this would be enough to help supplement my insurance whenever I do leave my full-time job.
So that's in two and a half years?
Yeah.
So we could budget for this, um, sorry, Jake?
No problem.
So we could budget for this and then, um, work out the formal details of the position, right, cause we would want that position to have some sort of formal requirement?
It's not a job description, it's, I think we just change the job description from what I, from what I reviewed of it, and just change the problem, volunteer and part-time.
But would you put like a requirement for X amount of hours in there, would there be a time sheet that you have to fill out, things like that?
That would be just being a part-time employee, but I think the responsibilities would still meet even for the part-time chief that we have as a volunteer chief.
Okay.
We can, we can revise that some, we can look at it and make sure, but, uh, so he would also get FICA and workers' compensation insurance would be just part of the, uh, that there was no retirement, no vacation, there's no sick time, you know, health insurance, that's not, a part-time employee's get them off of that.
So he is covered under work comp?
Yeah, yeah, that's mandatory.
Everybody in lockdown is fine?
Yeah, all firefighters are covered with work with comp, because we're considered employees of the city because of volunteer.
Right, right.
Kenny, this wouldn't change any of, your thoughts are trying to retain firefighters, or we're still looking for all avenues?
We're still looking at all avenues for that, the hope there was maybe to have somebody in there a couple days a week, see the benefit somewhere down the road, seeing the benefit of having somebody during the daytime several days a week, then maybe we could transition and start hiring some people to actually staff the station.
So your goal would be to be there for those three days that you find out?
Yeah, for the most part.
Let you on call, or?
Right, or unless I have to run, pick up supplies or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My thought would be three days a week, eight-hour days type thing.
Yeah, yeah, I think you gotta have a little leeway there too.
Oh, yeah. He don't have to be sitting at the firehouse, there's other times he's gonna be, he's got a computer, the computer age, he can be in his truck doing something and still be applying that to his time.
And there's also a lot of things like meetings in St. Francis County that I go to in the evenings, and chiefs meetings, and all kinds of other additional meetings.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of time involved, I know that.
So my thought, my thoughts would be guarantee you twenty-four hours a week is what we were talking about, like three eight-hour days, it may not be eight hours that day, but I would guarantee you twenty-four hours of work every week.
Well, you're always just asking about yourself, Paul, too.
Oh, yeah. The guys get frustrated with me because I listen to the calls when I'm at work too.
So how do you think the rank and file would look at this, I mean...
The ones that I've talked to are really looking at it as a positive thing.
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Because they're looking at having somebody there, and I can be doing some of the minor maintenance things that we can't get accomplished on a Wednesday night in just a couple of hours, or building maintenance, keeping things a little cleaner, we keep a decent firehouse, but there's things I could keep cleaner around there and be there for receiving some of the shipments instead of having to have everything shipped here to City Hall and come pick it up, and there's other things we can do.
Yeah, I think it's a positive thing myself.
I don't think you'd have to worry about staying busy.
No, he never is.
Tourism tasks or something like that?
He is a part-time school bus driver though, you know that? He is a part-time school bus driver.
Oh, so he fulfilled that, yeah, oh, okay.
If you just let him care, maybe he'll come over full-time.
You know what, he's the reason he's not there full-time.
Okay.
And if other people told me, they would be full-time and...
See, Bobby, if we follow up, somebody else will take a shot.
I knew it would come, build it and they will come. Moving on.
No, I like the idea personally.
Yeah, me too. We just had the, the couple of capital improvements in the rural fire fund item, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has about anything.
Just curious, because it's been a bit since we met as committee, are, how are your staff right now?
Um, I'm down two, which has improved, we were down at one point up to five people.
Yeah.
And like I put in my notes for the last board meeting, believe it or not, we had two people that physically moved to St. Genevieve to join our department, so I, I think that speaks volumes of the reputation that we have. And we did recently, when I put in my notes, that we actually did a move up to Antonia during the St. Louis floods, we actually took a couple of guys that took time off of work and met me up there, and we stood by at a station up there helping cover part of the mutual aid program that we have.
Thanks, Kenny.
Back, Mr. Tourism?
Yep.
Interim, interim.
Interim.
Interim tourism man.
So right below fire, we go into the Tourism Welcome Center, so we have a tourism grant that we applied for and were accepted back in July, total is forty thousand sixteen, our part of that is sixteen thousand sixteen, so that's, um, we just put the total in for that line item, cause we'll be paying out. So we'll have radio advertising, um, we're doing some SEM, SEM or SEO, can, uh, work through Madden, that's to get our, get our information out there in particular for the website, um, and then we've got a little bit of print advertising and, um, there's one more item, and I can't think of what it is, we're not doing TV, TV's too expensive this time around, um, it's cause we're kinda limited on what we had. Uh, but that's our, that's part of our marketing, besides the marketing that we also budget in the general fund as well, so we have twenty thousand in there. Uh, we had, had requested a part-time employee, we turned that down, we do have money already in for part-time employees because of the last budget year that we had working down there in the Welcome Center, so we just left the budget at that, so those lines will stay the same. Landscaping, just to do some more removal of plants and trimming, uh, so we got two thousand budgeted for that, digital services, that is the amount of, we've got a lot of programs that we're using now like Adobe, um, the, there's a, a program that we are gonna be using for the website, that's a, a calendar, uh, renewing our, um, our, um, earls, I mean, all this digital stuff that we're getting involved in, we wanted to put a separate line item in, so that's what's included in that line now, it's just renewals for that type of electronic stuff that we have to renew. Skylight replacement, we're still hoping to do that, um, hard to get anybody interested, and still working with Steve to try to get some, get some plans on it, at this point, the skylights have stopped leaking, so...
It's a Christmas miracle.
They've had some heavy rains and it hasn't, it hasn't...
It's on duct tape.
Yeah, but we're just keeping our fingers crossed. And then on the next page, you have tourism tax, um, the TTC approved a forty thousand dollar expenditure, which is on print materials, uh, rack cards, uh, we're gonna look at a visitor study, number of other things, so they actually budgeted above what we estimate their income, but that's because we have money sitting there and we wanna utilize it.
You're asking who our billboard, what kind of billboard?
We are, cloud along, the county is going to pay for the next couple of months, we've paid for the last three months.
How much is it?
Forty, two fifty each month, so we have that through March. We, uh, we advertised Jura Fed, we advertised a, um, the, what was it they had down at the Dewberg Center, it was, um, quilts, they had a quilt show, so we did that, we're looking at advertising for Pecanapalooza, um, and we'll do Oktoberfest, we'll look at putting that out there. We figure those events bring people in, and that's important to have that kind of, uh, event advertising put out there. Now, we've also come up with a policy on that, so that we're gonna send that out and businesses or the different organizations want to participate and, and put an ad together, and we put it out in our rotation, we'll do that, depending upon how many impressions they're looking for, whether they're looking to, how many signs they wanna be on, that kinda stuff, so we'll get that out. I've had a couple of people looking at it, I've gotten some good feedback, I think we're just about ready to get that out there, it's just getting it out there, it's gonna be the difficult part, getting it to everybody that might be interested.
Do you have a small committee that'll help you with that, or is it just you?
Mission, cause I, I need everything to be funneled through me, but what we've done in that policy is that everything is up to the decision of the tourism director, so I can make final decisions on artwork and, you know, some middles and costs and that kinda stuff.
I just know there's a lot of people downtown that are, are willing to help you if you are in a, a small committee, just a second pair of eyes on, you know, direction or things like that, so...
So we'll be utilizing those folks soon, once we figure out, well, once I find out how to manipulate the website, I've got a group that wants to get together to do that. Other stuff, we, we did have somebody that was gonna come tonight and talk about that and try to get the downtown group together, gonna be, we have so many volunteer organizations as it is now, how can we, you know, generate the excitement to get others to do it, so we'll, we'll play that by ear, and we're gonna talk about all of that on marketing at the next work session next week.
Happy, what is the, um, oh, I lost it, the renewal, the five thousand dollar renewal under marketing?
Uh, that was for the website.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we budgeted for that, but we spend all that, I don't know, but that's a good budget.
Like for website maintenance?
Yeah, website maintenance.
Okay, which we still need to find a contractor?
We need to finish it and then we'll, then we'll look at that, you know, looking at, whether to renew with them or to renew with somebody else.
Okay.
Uh, we've had a couple of offers, and again, I can get into some of that next week. Any other questions?
All right, good.
Good job.
All right, moving on to Alliance, and everything they didn't know we... No, no, I'll be quick. All right, let's go ahead and start, uh, Park Department, yeah, of course, the, the trail grant, the, uh, next list is the wide area mower, I budgeted sixty thousand for that item, um, that'll be a replacement for the John Deere bat wing mower in the park.
What happened there?
Uh, it's continuing to be a, a maintenance nightmare, so it's been to multiple John Deere locations, technicians cannot get it lined up, uh, and one dealership even said don't bring him back, so...
Are, are you gonna have a cost to dispose of that then, or, I mean, what's gonna happen to it?
Uh, surplus it and sell it, so, yeah, yeah, one or the other.
What did we spend on that?
Uh, roughly eleven, so, uh, five thousand budgeted for picnic tables in the parks, honestly, that five thousand would get us about three picnic tables, maybe four if we find a good deal.
Are we talking about buying new picnic tables?
So...
All wood?
Probably rubber coated, so...
Seal.
Biocoded steel.
Okay.
That's what I got for the parks, street department, it'd be a pickup truck replacement, that'll replace the last of the O-two Chevys, um, the other one burnt, burnt down, the street department, this one is pretty wore out, um, one thing we didn't take into consideration with this truck was, this is the truck that has the tommy gate on the back, so at some point, maybe even in the following budget year, we may have to look at additional of the tommy gate, uh, to that vehicle.
That can be pushed over?
Maybe, maybe not, so we'll find out for sure.
Right.
Does anybody know what tommy gate is?
I was about to ask.
Yeah. It's a hydraulic lift on the back of a pickup, allows us to lift fifty-five gallon drums, equipment, saws, um...
I was just gonna ask later, bud.
Yeah. Ask now, it's okay.
You're welcome.
He's opening the door.
Uh, next one would be, next one would be the snow plow to upfit that truck, all right, so...
And you're talking about a nice truck that's required on eight foot bed regular cab?
It'd be a regular cab one ton. Well, next one would be a John, replacement of the John Deere three oh one A, that'd be for a, not a compact, but maybe a little bit bigger than a compact tractor, um...
So that one has a sickle bars?
It won't have a sickle, they, one we have now has a sickle bar.
Right.
This one we're looking at would be one that would be able to have a boom attached to it with a brush hog. Yeah, so we can reach over and mow the creek banks better, um, we've had to utilize the counties numerous times, um, on creek banks here in town, so...
So we're good now though on creek banks?
Yes, everybody's happy with creek banks, I'm sure. Street projects, two hundred and fifty thousand, of course, uh, the next item would be the crack sealer, uh, there's a hundred and fifty thousand listed in there, that number was put there while we were trying to obtain current pricing on a, on a good machine, I think, uh, from what I'm finding, about seventy-five would be sufficient on there, so we can...
Can you explain exactly what that machine is?
The crack sealer machine would be a machine that would melt down the tar, and we can go around and seal the cracks in the road to prevent the base from being saturated.
So it'd be a trailer type?
It is a trailer type unit, yes.
Right, but that just heats it up?
Heats it up, melts it, you're able to run it through a wand or fill a portable tank, and you can go around and fill the cracks, so...
They just did stabilize, I don't know if anybody saw that, they did the cracks first and then, they finished up the sealing today, they're...
Of course, we're not gonna, not gonna seal roads, but we will seal the cracks to prevent moisture from going down, so...
Well, they used to do that, I wonder what happened, uh, the street department used The street department used to do the cracks all the time.
Equipment in the longer works.
Right, so I understand that. They wore that.
So we're at half that number of realistic?
Yes, realistically.
That's good.
Of course, twenty-five thousand for the sidewalk reimbursement, we'll have that in there for another year. Just so you guys know, nobody's taking advantage of that opportunity at this point. Dump truck, a hundred and fifteen thousand. We've currently already purchased a bed for a dump truck that was deemed unsuitable for the road, so we can't put a new bed on a old truck. But we can buy a cabin chassis and put that bed and hydraulic unit on the new truck. So the hundred and fifteen thousand is what the state bid is for a single axle dump truck cabin chassis.
And the single axle bench handles what we?
What we need to do inside of our streets to get around in town with these, yes.
That's beat up pretty good, I mean, suspension and all that.
Yeah, there's good plenty, I mean, that haul.
Because, you know, Motocross, like all the big canons now, so they don't use the single, same.
Same, that's right.
So is that plow and everything for that truck or is that?
Yeah, they would just, on the big trucks, they just weld new mounts on them and use the same equipment they got.
Oh, there's the same plow.
For that truck, it's in good shape.
Hydraulic and everything, three and zero.
Yeah, they're all self-contained now, so.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, we'll move on to water. Somebody has questions about street or parks?
I was just going to say, if, if that crack sealer comes in at half the cost it's budgeted here, wouldn't we be able to put like that, potentially seventy-five brands towards more streets ideally? Okay.
There you go.
Sweaty cover.
Uh, water and sewer budgets, water, water main project for next year, we've included the ARPA money in that. Water tank maintenance, that's the maintenance agreement that we have with Suez Group to maintain the water towers, washing, cleaning, repainting, interior inspections, washouts, so, that's the.
How many tanks do we talk about?
We got, currently on it, there's three tanks, but I need to add the onsite tank at the water plant and the new one on progress park.
So that numbers still good?
This number is going to cover the three tanks.
Okay.
That are currently on the project.
So it'd have to be increased for the other two?
Yes, which at that point will go up.
Oh, I see, okay.
Or qualification.
Right.
So that's the water tank maintenance. Water's twenty-six thousand for the water plant roof to rebe, recoded, there's some leaking areas, rain the other day, we got some drips in the doorway, so, similar to what was going on at the firehouse, so. Uh, we'll skip that one for a second, we'll go to the new mower. The twenty thousand, that'd be for a new diesel mower for the water and sewer departments that will be used for off-site water tower locations, load stations. The current mower we're using now is, we purchased, used in two thousand twelve and we're still using it, it's still functioning, but it's starting to, starting to show its life, so.
DRs on there?
Yes. Uh, back to the one we skipped, you'll see that is split, that's a vac truck, it's split between water and sewer, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand on each side. This is for a sewer jetting backing truck that has hydro excavation capabilities. So, we per, in recent years, we've purchased trailer jetters which allows us to drill jet, clean the lines and back them, not back them out. So what we do is we take the blockage, we take the roots, we take everything and we just drag it down the line and then we go to the next manhole and we pull it down. Eventually, it all builds up in our lift stations and the wastewater plant, all causing, degassing and all causing us issues. This truck would allow us to clean the sewer mains, back the material out that was causing the blockage to begin with and removing it from the sewer system. Also, this truck has hydro excavation capability which would allow us to basically dig with high-pressure water and vacuum. So basically a giant shop vac and a, we can, we can bore holes for signs without calling in locates, you can dig up utilities, you can dig around utilities without damaging and in the utility business right now, everything is getting buried in the ground. The ground is so congested, it's almost to the point you can't dig in an easement with a machine without packing. So this, this machine has been on the list for, I would say, ten years, it's been discussed and we're in a position where it can happen.
What's the savings? There would be some savings at the water plant if we got rid of all that debris, right?
At the lift stations, the wastewater plant, jetting, reduce blockages, homeowners see less issues, so.
Yeah.
That's key, homeowners less issues.
Yeah, right.
Instead of pushing the blockage down the road to the next situation.
The jetting trailer we bought, like, two years ago.
Uh, I think it was three years ago.
Where do we do with that then?
Well, that's a, that's another discussion. At times, like when we have to hire Dutch or Badger or somebody to come down and use their vac truck down here, sometimes our machine is downstream, either creating a vacuuming, vacuum, continuing flow, so some of the smaller areas, this would be able to get into a little better, so it would be a benefit to the city to keep it, but if it was, if, if the option wasn't that we had to keep it or get rid of it, you know, that would make the deal, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to take the truck over the trailer every time, so.
Yeah.
And the cost of that trailer was?
Seventy-two thousand. And also, if they deem that, you know, the, if their prized value comes back at twenty thousand, it's not worth getting rid of. It would benefit us more than it would.
Right.
It's paid for, right?
Yes.
Talking about that hydro capability of that truck, I've seen Amarin dig post holes. Yeah, I couldn't think of dig post holes with water.
Yes.
Oh, I believe it, yeah, I believe.
Mississippi Lime has one, they bore through the limestone with it and set guardrails.
Man, through limestone.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, sure, yeah, it's in my two tanks.
So you split that between water and sewer, but I mean, the main benefit would be sewer?
No, the main benefit would be both equally because of the hydro excavation capabilities. Right now, you have fibers that run through this town, fiber optic lines that have been bored in. If, we have to dig around those lines, if we hit those, I mean, those, some of those could cost up to a million dollars a minute if we damage them, so.
We got to get this truck.
Is there a, well, I'm sure it'd be factored into the overall Alliance contract, but training for use of this truck and?
Training is, the training with these trucks, the training that comes with them is a very in-depth training, it's a one-week training. Some of them are offsite, some are onsite. We actually had one of these trucks in town and demoed it, but they said a minimum week and then they will stay as long as they need to until you feel comfortable with the equipment. I do have two guys on staff that have, have ran trucks for years, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
One department is huge.
They don't need a huge one, this is a middle of the run, single axle.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
Questions?
Hi, Steve.
Thanks.
It was over with media development.
Probably a bit shorter than Steve.
Oh, well, it's important though.
Couple of items there, the first one is the historic grant. We approved this last year, but due to the failure to fund those federally, they're just basically coming over to this year and in fact, we'll be doing one of those grants instead of two, so it'll be about nine thousand dollars and we'll get that money back, of course, once the event is over. And then the code update software, we talked a little bit about last Thursday, so we're talking about taking the permit application process, whether it be special use or building permit and having, and having a system in-house that is easier to track that, better reporting, capability to have the portal on the website so you could apply for a building permit online and submit it through the portal and it would also have to be one hundred percent complete before you submit it, which that is a problem sometimes. That's a combination on that line of that piece of software, which is, we have, we've talked with three companies so far and two of them came in around ten thousand and then the annual fee, I see over there is ten thousand, it, one's fifty-five hundred, one's about seventy-five hundred, so we're shooting a little high there, but that's part of that twenty-five thousand. The other part would be to probably have our nuisance, stormwater subdivision codes looked at by some, some code specialists and have those gone through and checked for any updates that need to have, we need to have legally or any old parts that need to come out, something we need to do every so often. And that would be about fifteen thousand, so you put the two together, gets twenty-five thousand.
So do we have early hardware that will handle these programs?
Hardware?
Yes.
Yeah. We have hardware in-house that would handle it, we would probably need to get a couple of iPads, maybe two.
Yeah.
To take out, because the, the software would give us the capability to go out, take snapshots of, you know, building inspections, those would automatically download to that. Same with nuisances, you go out, take a snapshot with the iPad, I mean, we do that with our phones now, but I take a picture, I email it to myself, I put it in a file, this would all happen with one piece of equipment, one piece of software.
So this is a potential streamlining of your job, say if, on any given election day, somebody were not here anymore and we had to backfill that position?
It would help streamline the process, it would also give us the capability to generate a report around a nuisance that says, "On this day, we went out, on this day, we issued a notice of violation." I mean, I can do that now, I've done that for you all via email, but.
It's a very manual process now.
Yes. Yes.
But no hook into the, the court system like we've, we've talked about, the, the gap in casenet fills right now, there's no, no remedy for that in this package.
No, it would show a citation.
Yeah, and, and that's where the process stops.
Right, so at that point, an officer takes the ticket over to the court, they schedule, well, actually, they give them a court date, that all then goes to the court system.
But this information could potentially be very useful to the prosecutor.
Yeah.
To have all of that information, not just a citation.
More coherent, you know?
Yeah. And then I'll mention on the back, I'm sure Happy's going to cover, that part of the capital projects is a comprehensive plan back there, which we have that process in place already.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all the rest of it. So we'll start at the front page with the legislative line. The PIBA building sale, transfer to capital projects, we're looking at a hundred thousand moving over. Roof check repair, we talked a little bit about this last week, looking at, that would include the cost if there's any repairs that need to be done, but we need to have the roof checked, five thousand dollars. Salary survey was requested, I estimate it thirty-five thousand, we don't have to do the job descriptions, that should save ten thousand dollars, so figuring about twenty-five thousand. So yes, MML has a list of all the cities that have different salaries, but the thing is, it doesn't include anything, you know, all the other companies that we compete against, which if you look at TG, if you look at Mississippi Lime, or if you look at other cities around here, it doesn't have all of those, all that information, it doesn't have anybody researching it, it's just what's been submitted by the cities. So I don't think doing it internally, we can do it accurately enough and I don't want there to be a, a look of a bias either of what, of how, the numbers that we came up with, so that's why we look at doing it outside.
So when you look at that stuff, I mean, what all does it, I mean, does it compare populations in the cities, does it compare budgets, revenue that the cities have to?
Yeah, and I haven't discussed it with, with the group yet, but I suspect that, yeah, you're looking at similarities because you can find another town of five thousand on the north end of the, of the state, does that really take into account the fact that we are in the St. Louis metropolitan area, between St. Louis and Cape Girardeau, so that we have those influences, where Macon probably doesn't have that. So yeah, you'd have to then look at those, those factors and include that. We also had a request from the Port Authority to set aside twenty-five hundred dollars for the ferry out off of Little Rock Road. We talked with Ron Inman over the weekend, he's been talking to Perry County, Perry County's apparently going to do their part, he has, I haven't heard from Perryville yet, I don't know about St. Jen County either, but they've made the request to all of the groups to assist with the, you know, helping the ferry to have enough revenue to continue. They also have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks on getting some state money, but they're in the process of trying to fix the ferry at this point, so there's a lot of money that's going out for that. But that was one of the things to consider if you want to add or give twenty-five hundred to the Port Authority for the ferry. We looked at a siren over on Highway M where the water tower is to cover that area of town, our maps show that there is not enough coverage there that would cover Valley Springs and the subdivision that's south of there, it's outside the city limits, but it's still a subdivision, but they're about fifty-five thousand dollars, don't have any grants available, so we'll just set it aside. I pulled it out because of what we tried to do to meet our, meet our fifty percent. For the administration, we have the City Hall and Boardroom decided to combine them, we figured about four hundred and fifty thousand to do both sides, we have hired Steve Bacon to finish that, he is underway on that. We have ARPA money for a couple of lines, a total of about two hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-eight dollars, that will be distributed for electric and for water improvements, that goes through the general fund for those projects as requested by our auditors. On the backside, let's see, we don't have anything for the cemetery, we haven't, we haven't seen a need for any other improvements, we're putting in a road this year, nothing else for debt service, capital projects, as David said, we have the comprehensive plan, so we budgeted for that. It will probably extend past this budget year, but we still want to leave that money in there so you're aware of the, of what, that we're funding it. We have two meetings coming up at the end of the month. And then cybersecurity, that's going to wrap up all that we're spending out of our ARPA funds to work on the fire department, to put in equipment there, and then we'll be looking at street maintenance and the sewer plant. So we're just working our way down the road. And the park house, and, yeah, okay, that probably covers everything. I was trying to describe to Gene Kurtz to go inspect everything and I forgot the firehouse, it's like, I can't remember, you know, there's something else out there. So that's a rundown of all the, the big items.
I would think so. Anything in particular you want to talk about, research, look at?
My plan is, for the work session next week, we have some discussion on the property south of town that we've taken, that we've traded with the church, that we're going to take and make residential. There are some others that would like for us to do certain things, we're going to have a closed session to start the work session next week. Then we will get in and talk about tourism after that, that'll be open session and then we can finish this up. The next week would be a P and Z meeting on that Thursday, so if not, if we decide, if we don't have enough time next week to do that, then we'll have to put it off till September and our first meeting then will be when we were supposed to read it the first time, so you'd have to look at two readings at the second meeting in September.
Close one?
Correct. Yeah, trouble is when we have to have it approved and submitted.
Well, I remember times too, we didn't even have a budget at the beginning when we had to have it done. You ladies can remember that. That wasn't pretty. Not at all.
Let's not do that again.
What?
I said, "Let's not do that again."
No, 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 never, never, never. Never, never.
So that's the, that's kind of on the calendar, it's how I listed things out, so.
Well, you can give Ashy a copy of that calendar.
Yeah, I got it somewhere.
Is that warm?
Honestly, my Thursday's open.
Well, I've got, I've got others that didn't know about it either, we've sent it out since June, it's been out there, yeah, so.
Split may have.
I, I think we've tried to cover what the board comments, what I got back on the questionnaires, I think we've tried to cover what we can with that, it's not everything, everybody's request, but what we put in here for salaries, that was what was put in the, the comments, the crack sealer. Trying to look at improvements to the park, doing stuff administratively. Trying to look at improvements to the park, doing stuff administratively, we'll keep working on things. It's, you know, we're not covering everything, but this is what we got at this point. I see extra money probably for streets because of what we budgeted and what we've now found our actual prices. I know that we budgeted more for streets this year, we weren't, and we didn't, when we had the bids come in, it was less, but now we see where we're going to use that money now to make the improvements, to make it right. So we'll get that started on Fourth Street and then start getting all of the streets that were on the agenda, get those done before the end of September. Excuse me. Yes?
There's a back truck, you know, there's $350,000. So we are not leasing that, we are buying it outright.
Are you bummed? Is the whole thing, I mean, Jackie and Ed and Dirt, or you have?
I've worked with different representatives from their companies, kind of blended specs together to make, you know, the idea.
Yes, so certain, like an international or forwards, not forwards, freight liner, whatever.
State this crack sealer too and stuff. I mean, is that a piece of equipment we, it's not, you can't rent, or, I mean, how many, how much will we actually use that?
Should use it once a year. Oh, yeah.
Especially as we get this street maintenance.
And not just once a year, I mean, you know, when the weather cools off and you can get the crack sealer down and it can cool off on the pavement without sticking or putting any anti-tack on it or anything like that. So it'll be in the cooler months, but it'll be, you know, we'll have like main thoroughfares and then we'll have like a subdivision this year and then the next year, create a rotation of it.
The only one I really have seen we've done was progress Parkway.
But there's more streets that we probably should be doing. And as we get, and as we get this street plan finalized and in place, from the guy's presentation, it's going to suggest performing this crack filling maintenance every, what, couple of years or so.
They're here on certain streets.
Streets, and so that department will have a schedule for that.
Yeah, it's continuous and ongoing. Honestly, every time we do a patch in the street, I mean, we should seal the crack around it.
The county's been nice to let us borrow, that's what we used to last year, but they've also got their scheduling, and so we have to wait for them not to have, have use of it or if they're running it out to somebody else, but they've been very generous in letting us use it when we need to.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, so now we've bowled your line of capital items, we do need to talk about, what do you want us to figure for pay?
I don't know what about you guys, just based on our, on all this, I lean towards the fixed dollar. 50 cent cola, up to 50 percent performance.
We can do any variation of that, we can do, because that's a dollar raise, you talked about if we were going to just give a compensatory allowance to everybody, it would be 2,080, but it wouldn't apply to their full-time, to their hourly rate. Or with the percentage, it's any percentage, we just put eight in there because of what we see, the cola for this year, that's what everybody's predicting, it's, I've seen 9% now potentially, but, you know, so when we put this together, seeing, yeah.
Yeah, where we're going to end up, I don't know.
Do we have a estimated percentage of whatever revenue thrown this year versus last year?
No, because we haven't completed the full year yet.
I'm not sure that I can support a salary survey, cost of $25,000, and then only raise a dollar an hour, well, 50 cents, 50 cents, when the difference between the 50 cents and the 8% is 35,000, but we take 25,000 and put it towards a salary survey. I don't think that's fair for our employees. I feel like that's kind of insulting.
You know, at first I wasn't much in favor of the salary survey until you look, until you look at the benefits of it and what we can achieve. You know, are we behind the eight ball? Are we not competitive? Are we over-competitive? I mean, those questions I would hope being asked in a survey. You know, there's just a lot of avenues in our pay and our employees and what we provide for them. I would hope there'd be a lot of questions asked, or answered, asked and answered, and that type of information and stuff. I know that's a lot of money, but.
And my reason, my thinking for going after it is, I mean, this is my third year on the board, and every time we have these conversations and we stress about what's the right raise and what's not, are we paying a fair wage, are we not, we're asking all these questions, and we get to the end of the budget and we still don't know. And so my thinking is, we do the salary survey and we know, and it's not something that's like fixed for years, it's just in place so we can set caps if we need to, starting wages, things of that sort, and make sure that we're, we are paying a fair price, given the area. You know, just like Happy said, you know, we're not just competing with other cities, it's other jobs, you know, an admin job here competing with an admin job at Mississippi Lime or vice versa. So are we paying competitively and fairly out of our budget? Also, the raises, you know, you do a percentage weight raise, well, that grows exponentially the more you do that, when our revenue's not growing exponentially, so when we do those percentage wages and we're kind of doing them blindly because we don't really know how our wages compare in the area, then those wages become a bigger percentage of your budget every year. And so my thinking is, if we do this, we know and we move forward, and we can maybe hopefully eliminate some of the confusion, questioning, wondering that goes about.
See, I agree that it's, I definitely agree that the salary survey is beneficial, but when I see that we're spending, you know, that it would be 25,000, but that the 8% cola and performance would be a $35,000 difference from the 50 cent, I think, I just don't think it's fair for our employees for them to only receive 50 cents and 50 cents compared to the 25,000. I think the 25,000 is beneficial for the survey salary, and I think that's important, but I also think that looking at a percentage shows our employees their value and their worth, and also makes up for that difference in the consumer, what is the, consumer price index that we've seen.
I want to make sure I'm tracking with you because I want to understand that, where, what your position is on that. And I would tell you, I support Ashley's position on that.
I do too.
But, so if we're talking about the value of two things, you're comparing buying a $25,000 product in a salary survey to basically buy, you're saying if it's one or the other, you want to opt towards $35,000, and the increase over these two sheets, it's 35,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I feel like the 25,000, I think, is going to be beneficial, yes, and I think that it'll be important in years to come. So I think if we had, I think if we're going to do it, we should do both. I don't think that we should deny our employees the raise, or only give the 50 cents, 50 cents raise when that difference is pretty minor from this year to last year. I don't know if I'm making a lot of sense. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but do you understand the full cost of that dollar increase?
What do you mean?
Do you know what that total dollar amount is for that dollar increase? In just a line item entry?
We have that somewhere, don't we? The difference?
I don't think on the sheet, but did we come up with like 60,000 or?
Well, but that's.
I think it was on the back of what the chief had sent everybody.
Right, but that still is not all-inclusive. You know, anytime you put an increase on a payroll item, the incidental costs jump in, then social security at 12.4%, work comp jumps in, you know, so the dollar an hour is not all-inclusive, it's over and above that somewhere, so there's additional costs you have to look at, you know, to get that total number and stuff, but, I don't know. But when I first got on board, I mean, that was the thing, and I don't know if the dollar, I'm all in favor of a fixed amount. I know there's been big opposition to that. You know, and I have to go back to probably one of the biggest rectifications we did in our overall salaries and stuff, and probably going to touch on something here that's not, but, you know, we took Prop P into it and we rectified 11 payrolls. That was a big portion of our city's overall payroll. You know, where the rest of the jobs fall into that, I don't know. We have nothing to base off of anything, and that's where I came into the study. Because I have asked those questions and I have looked at other municipalities, there's comparisons out there that we need to see right, wrong, or indifferent and stuff. I hate to spend $25,000 on the salary study and stuff, but I don't want to look at it as one or the other. You know, I don't think that's the right position to take.
So.
Get $25,000 from something else if we think there's a better number.
The vicious elephant in the room that I'm going to recognize, and I'm sure everybody knows already, but the dollar option's unpopular. I get that. It's not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be popular with me if I was on the other side of it, so I get that I can appear to be hypocritical when I talk about the dollar, and it's not me, it's you guys. So I know the dollar's unpopular, but without buying the salary survey, if we're talking about buying a product, we would be giving 8% blindly, and I'm not saying that that's not something we should do, I'm only saying that's the situation we look at. To give 8% blindly, there are probably ways where we're not looking at one or the other, but to buy the salary study future-proofs you going forward because you have that product. And you might find out, hey, next year's board probably needs to give 8%, 9%, you might find that out, I don't know, but today, I don't think we know that. And I think to Ashley's point, we get to this point of the meeting, probably arguably the ugliest point, right? I think people in the back row probably agree with that. And then, and probably the most uncomfortable point for us sitting here too, but next year it won't be, so let's get well. We need to buy some stuff to get well, we need a tool in our toolbox that we don't have right now. If we don't buy this tool, then next year, good luck to you, you're doing the same thing.
Happy, have you ever done, been involved with other cities that have done those?
Harrisonville had one when we were there. They did one in Festus, we talked about it, and they did it after I'd left. I have not done one myself, no.
Well, can we reach out to somebody and find out what their opinion of that is after they've had it done?
Well, Greg loved it in Festus. He thought it was the best thing they'd done so that he could follow it.
Who was this, the city administrator?
Yeah, yeah, great camp. And then in Harrisonville, we made that presentation of here's what the salary survey shows for the next year, and, you know, that decision was made for budget. The board could still give a cola raise if they wanted, but there were steps that were included in this for people to go up, for education, time on the job, that kind of promotions. Before we get to Ford, Jason, did you, do you want to add something?
You know, if they do this study, is the plan or is the city in a position, if they find out that a majority of their employees are underpaid or under competitive, is the city in a position to bring them up to that competitive, or is the city looking to do the opposite and now this survey has came in and we're a little bit above where we should be, so now you've got employees that go five years without a pay raise to bring them in within this range of the survey says they should be?
You couldn't cap it, yeah.
So I'm just looking, like, what is the board looking at? And, you know, because I know the board isn't in a position or hoping that this, they find out that we're underpaid and they have to give everybody a big raise, so I know they're looking to do the opposite, but are they prepared to fix it if it doesn't go the way the board's hoping it goes?
I'm not look, I'm not looking to do anything. I want to know where we're at. Because we do a lot, especially with, and I don't mean to point fingers, but with your department comparing to the county, with the sheriff's office, with county employees. You know, I work with a lot of county employees, I'm a state employee, everybody can know what I make as a state employee, I know what all the county employees make, so I've got some pretty strong opinions, and when we're talking about, you know.
So then you, then the board realizes, our, and what we'd argue with Prop P is, we're losing guys to the sheriff's department, and our guys are underpaid compared to the sheriff's department deputies. So, you know, before this question, why don't you do a comparison to the cities the same size as our city? We're not losing guys to Macon, we're not losing guys, we're losing guys to the department right next door to us.
Right, and that's, and that's what I think we want to know, we want to know, but not just for your department.
But I think the survey study is just strictly cities are a comparison.
Yeah, it's also.
Yeah, that's what brought up the whole subject.
And I feel that we're probably going to find out we've got some employees who are underpaid, some who are overpaid, and so then we can address that and make things more equitable for everybody.
And I can probably maybe speak a little bit more honest because I'm the one bringing it up. I think we're going to see a situation of both of those that you had just mentioned, right? We might see some people that are making more than they, than this salary study would recommend capping at, but we're also probably going to see a couple people that are probably making below. What I see this happening is we're setting a starting wage and a cap wage based on each position, and as long as you're within range, there's nothing stopping from getting raises, and even if you hit that cap, there's nothing stopping a future board from saying, okay, if you're at the top of the cap, you get a, what'd you call it?
Compensation.
A compensation, so like a, not necessarily a bonus, but a budgeted amount that doesn't add to your salary, but you can still see that benefit in the year. There's so many options for that.
And I guess the big thing, it may not, it may not even pertain to the police, but just an employee in general, so you find out that your base pay or your starting pay should be up here, so you have a guy that's been here five years that has finally got to that, and now you're going to bring in the base pay at that. Is that going to cause issues with employees or morale within any of the departments?
I think when you get well, when you haven't been well for years, I think you risk that. And that's just what I think. That's one seat of this board, that's not what they think, that's what I think. And it's unfortunate, but the option is what? To remain in a position of being unfortunate for an indefinite period of time, or do you pick a date and say, hey, there's streets, stormart, I'll go on for way longer if you guys want to listen? We got to pick dates to get better as a city in general, and then we got to live with those. I hear you, I get it.
I'm a hundred percent in favor, especially if it gives us something going forward, you know, because now there's no answer to anybody. Where do I cap out as an employee with the city? Where do I go in 10 years? Where am I at 15 years? You know, and if that's the plan, I think it's great.
Yeah, and also just being forward-thinking for this board, you know, if the future boards want to consider bringing in public works or water sewer or something like that, we can have that as part of these studies, so the future board knows if that's a feasible option, what the most feasible option is. This will set ranges for each position, so you have this guy that's new, but in a higher position, higher ranking position, maybe bringing in skill from previous jobs, but new to the department or whatever, but a higher rank, but this guy's been here for maybe a little longer. What happens is you set these ranges and it keeps that distance between ranks, but it doesn't necessarily eliminate their option to, or the board's option to give those people that have capped out a little extra money in the year, right? So just because you make 50 grand throughout the year doesn't mean you're capped at that if the board wants to give you a $3,000 whatever, happy, what do you call it? You know, compensation at the end of the year, so, and then there's other benefits that can be worked into. This just gives us somewhere to start with our discussions going next year because, like I said, these last three years, when it comes to these conversations about wages and raises I said, these last three years, when it comes to these conversations about wages and raises and the other benefits, there's all these questions and it's an uncomfortable conversation for any of us to have, right?
I agree.
Nobody wants to be the jerk. But at the end of the day, we're spending the taxpayers' money, you know, when we, when we consider these raises, we have to answer to the taxpayers of when, when they don't see the job you're doing. We can talk to Happy and verify it and stuff like that. But when the taxpayers don't see that, they're asking, well, I think that person's overpaid. I think that person's overpaid. We can say, well, we did this wage study and they're, we're, we're paying a fair wage.
I agree. I think the same was mainly morale is, is the city in a position, if we find out anybody is underpaid or we're not competitive, to fix that problem? Because no matter if it's a city hall employee, a police officer, who it is, if they find out by this study, I should be making this amount, but I'm here and the city don't have a plan to fill that gap.
You got, you got to cross that bridge when you get there. We can't even see that bridge right now. We don't even know.
But to me, this is something that will hold the city accountable to make sure that those guys, that those guys or gals or whoever it is, being treated fairly with their position. If they're low ranking, the city's not in position. They've got this study saying, you guys did this study, find a way to get, get us there.
That was my one point. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I don't think you want to, I think where we're at, problem is we're trying to tie these, we're trying to tie this study to a raise. It's too different.
Right.
The study needs to be done. That's, that's over here. Now we need to talk about a fair wage and to take care of our employees with a raise. In the, in the time we're in, and I understand the inflation, up 8%, everything's high. You know, could that come down? It could come down. Who knows? But we still are at a point where we got to, we're going to send a message to the, to the people that, that serve and are working for us. So that's the whole question.
I went back and looked up the COLA raises for social security over the last, I don't remember, 20 or 25 years and stuff. And I mean, it's kind of an eye opener and stuff. I mean, there's double digits in the eighties, you know, and then there's one or 2%, you know, and, and those are based off of somebody a lot smarter than me. You know, a whole bunch of people, I guess, studying that and stuff. But, you know, since I've been on the board, I mean, for the longest time, it was this 3% number, it seemed like.
Well, that's what we've been doing, every year, 3%.
Right. Well, we got into, you know, what was that pool of money that that was going to cost? You know, and it gave us a simple number to look at, you know? And that's why I ask if you knew what the dollar cost and what the 8%? Because there's a big difference. There's what, $40,000 difference, you know, in the two? So, you know, but I agree with Mike and Ashley and stuff. Without the study, we're just giving it an opinion and we're not basing it off of anything. And I know, you know, Jason, with the police department, we've compared against the county and stuff, but we have to compare against other cities our size. I mean, other budgets our size.
Well, I think the biggest thing is what you're going to compare to, Bob, is other businesses, Mississippi Lime. And I think this study is going to, it's going to shock a lot of people, is what it's going to do. You know, and we get, we, I always said, we got to take, and I understand the balance beam we're on, we got to take care of our employees and our customers. Our employees and our, and it's a, and that's the beam we're on, you know? So we got to try to keep everybody happy.
Yeah, and like Ashley said, I mean, this is.
And we got to keep, we got to be, protect our citizens. We got to make sure our citizens are getting the services that they need. And I understand the, the pay on it and we got to able to afford that. But like there again, we can't get into this mindset that we're gloom and doom and we got to, it's, we can't get so far out ahead of us in the future to worry about what we don't have or what could happen and forget about where we're at today. You know? And where we're at today is a lot of hurting people, you know, because of the prices. So.
Yeah, right. Got a lot of hurting people on both sides.
Oh, I, I understand. I agree. You know, so. And I'll support whatever the board comes up with, you know.
And that's all that, it comes down to a balancing act call of being fair to everybody. You know, we're elected by the people, we have to represent them properly. We're trying to be the intermediary between, you know, the employees and stuff and find a happy median. I don't think anybody here at this table and stuff is out after anything but trying to be fair.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
You know, but that's the whole, you know, that's the whole objective and stuff.
I just don't want to tie this study to this pay raise because the study needs to be done. I totally agree. That's for, for the future of the city, that needs to be done. But we need to come up with a, something, right now, there's got to be a decision made tonight about what we're going to do, so.
Even before the, the suggestion of the, the pay raise or the, the salary study, I was leaning towards the dollar. I know it's not the most favorable option. The reason being is, I mean, just based off the, the revenue dollar, I have a hard time increasing above the percentage of revenue increase, just because of the exponential factors there. It becomes such a bigger part of your budget. I don't see that we're going to, it doesn't seem like we're going to see that big of a difference between 2021 and 2022 numbers. So the dollar was something that I could, could be comfortable with based on, on that, that to me seemed fair across, in, in all facets that we have to try to please. It's, it's not the most favorable to employees. I get that, especially when we're talking about a dollar versus 8%. For, for some people, it's a huge difference. But when, I, I had actually some constituents reach out to me and push toward the dollar or, or the fixed amount versus the percentage increase. So that's why I stand where I stand. I respect anybody else's decision and the board has a majority, so that's, that's where I'm at, is recommending the dollar.
Anybody else recommend the dollar? I do. Bob?
I've always going to recommend a fixed amount. Is the dollar right? Should it be more? Should it be less? I, I'll let somebody else answer first.
I ask you that. Because we got to come up with a decision. We're, we got, I got two people that say a dollar.
All right. Dollar, fine.
Mike? Have you done something?
Well, times how many employees we, is it, what was the number, 28?
I think it was like 29, including all the hard time on that list that was given.
Right, right. Mostly we're looking at, we, we're looking at 17 plus if we, we'll have, we'll have automatic raises anyway for those that are at the welcome center because they have, the minimum wage shows up to $12 an hour January 1st anyway. So that's already been figured in.
And another 85 the next year.
No, I think that's it. $12 is the maximum state.
It was $12.85.
$12 by 2023.
Yeah. And it's 85 cents every year. Anyway.
So you're talking about the dollar and our raise for everybody, part-time and full-time?
Yes, yeah. Again, I, I know, I know it's unpopular. I, I get it and I'm looking at, right at you. So I mean, hopefully you can give me credit for that. I'm in for a buck. Was saying that hopefully what we're buying today is something for the future to, to make raises better, if that makes sense to you.
I got four with the dollar. Suzy?
I don't know. I'm still torn and I keep, I keep looking at that 8% and thinking that's a lot and I would be more comfortable with it at like 6%. But if the majority says a dollar, I mean, I, I definitely see both sides.
Well, I already got a majority that says a dollar. I got four of the people. Am I correct that are for a dollar?
Yeah. But then she just said 6%. So I.
She would have said 6% last week.
I know this could go on for hours. I'm not trying to do that, but I mean.
But let's make one thing clear. We're budgeting our amount and what comes up in the salary thing or whatever, we can still make further adjustments within that budget year. So it's a starting point.
Yeah, 6% would be under a dollar for some, but it'd be more than a dollar for a number of people. But I still sit at a fixed rate, so.
I'm, I'll face it to you, I mean, I think with the, with the, with the salaries that we've changed of city employees in the last couple of years, I think we've rectified, or the taxpayers have rectified a significant deficit. You know, this board made the decision to not make the decision to put it on the taxpayers and they, they approved it and stuff. You know, I, I don't know where we should be. I, I don't know who all the compares to, Lime Hill, Sheriff's Department, Perryville, you know? I just think.
Doing the study, you'll find out next year.
Yep.
So I have four for a dollar.
Four and a half.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Chrissy, I'm not going to ask you because I, I know you're not for it, so you're for 8%.
I, I would, I'm sorry, go ahead. Not necessarily 8%. I, I think the dollar is not enough. I don't think it's adequate for our employees with the cost of living going up. Energy prices are up 47% in the past year. I just think, yeah.
Are they going to stay up?
But they're up right now.
I, I support that.
They're up right now.
I agree.
So people are paying right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I do think if we go with the dollar, then I hate to move on, but we do need to still discuss the, the health insurance cap, correct? So as much as I don't like saying, we'll, we'll do a cap, if we say this year, we'll do a cap.
I can agree.
With the dollar raise, I would recommend that for this year, we cap, we do the $300 cap.
I can agree with that.
I don't, I don't say we're sticking with that because those rates go up so much every year. And for, for too long, everybody will just be paying the cap. But I would say for this year, if we're going to do this, I'd feel much more comfortable if we're going to cap the employee contribution at 300.
I can agree with that.
Because our premium went up, what, 26%?
19, 19.4, 19.7. It was 20 and then it came down a little bit.
That would be something I would feel at least a little bit better about if, if we're in agreement with the raises.
Yeah.
Is everybody agreeing with that?
So what cap are you talking about, the 300?
The, what the employees pay max for the, the family.
In March, it goes up to 30% for employees.
So which is which? Is that going to be more than 300 or less than 300?
There will be some that could be.
Four employees that were going to be more than 300.
Yeah, I think there's three or four.
I have a scratch.
And then the rest will be more.
And we didn't really talk much about the, the non-cost benefit, the low non-cost benefit sheet that you gave us.
I figure that's, that's, I've also tasked the department head to come up with something creative kind of thing. So I'll have some other ideas.
Whenever we do this, it's just too heavy of, it's too light of a, of a subject to discuss in this atmosphere.
But I know some of that, like I was wanting to entertain and, yeah, I brought the suggestion of the personal holiday.
I think you asked.
So.
Right.
There's definitely some things there that will.
I can't get it on my phone.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure about you.
You can only touch it?
Yeah. I'm aware of it.
It's the new era. Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I think you present a compromise that is.
Okay. Suitable.
Okay.
Yeah, so with that $1 raise, we can fit it within what we need to fit it into and we'll be in good shape.
So if I'm correct, we didn't cut anything that was recommended of the capital?
Nobody said.
But we will most likely adjust down the crack dealer and adjust up street projects?
Yeah.
That's the only change I have. Okay, thank you.
I mean, unless you all, unless there's something else you want to discuss further.
Oh, you did mention at a previous meeting and we had a conversation about, so the position Connie's currently in, taking that part-time position to full-time?
Yeah, yeah. So she has moved into Lisa's, so that's full-time.
Okay, sorry, the position she was previous.
And then, yeah, and then we went ahead, we're going to advertise for that to be a full-time position. It's already in the budget, so we're, we're.
Okay.
Well, we're not going to get somebody hired probably till the next budget year, but it's in the budget for the next year.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're going to dismiss us after you? You got more? Mayor, I want to leave it up to you because these are, these are some of the final times that you'll be doing these tasks.
If there's any more, Mike, you have any others?
No, I know you'll miss it.
Okay. Well, that meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.